All right, so we'll call this meeting to order at six oh three P M. Uh, we have a study session uh to discuss events and entertainment policies uh for the city here. Um, it was requested by Councilwoman Bond Crooks, so uh Councilwoman Bond Crooks, I'll kick it over to you first if you wanna uh get started for us.
Okay, thank you Mayor. Um, yeah, it's um something that I've been interested in pursuing for the last uh year, year and a half. Um, make no mistake, I love all the entertainment that goes on in the city of Trenton and I love the downtown events. Nothing, you know, pleases me more to see our downtown full of vendors and people and restaurants busy and bustling and everything, and I think it's a great thing. But we have no policy for the city. We have no criteria for who is allowed to do these events. How are they charged? How many vendors are allowed? Timeframes. Um, there's different uh, you know, costs and fees for, you know, in other cities to do these kind of events. And I just wanna kinda get to the point where it's fair for all. And uh, it's in the D D A district, which I would eventually like to expand the D D A district down West Road. I've often thought about that. We have a lot of businesses on West Road that I know would probably like to be involved in the D D A district. Um, road closures. How many events are we going to close the roads down a year? Um, the fees that we char- you know, that uh, are we going to charge vendors for being in our community? Um, it concerns me that a lot of the vendors that come to our town uh come here and uh they sell the same merchandise and the same goods that our Trenton taxpaying businesses sell also. And sometimes it takes away from some of the businesses um when they don't do business in their businesses because they're at the vendor shows and different things. Which, I mean, I think there's room for all of us. And I just wanna establish some kinda criteria for this. Um, I know that the D D A has paid for the insurance for um these events and that concerns me a little bit because uh that's taxpayer dollars to private- paying for some of these private businesses to hold these events. Um, the insurance that we have in the city, we have an umbrella policy for a lot of things, but that's more or less city, you know, city sponsored events. Um, there's just a lot of questions um that I have and uh I'm sure, you know, all the council members have ideas of how we could make it great for all, me- meaning that the businesses thrive and bring in as many people as you want. The vintage market people are here tonight and the restaurant tours and and I think everyone knows that I love the vintage market people, freckles and grit. I love your businesses. I thank God you're here every day because you've made a tremendous, you know, contribution to our downtown. Uh, it's great. Um, and I'm and I'm all for that. And I remember probably five, six years ago, I asked the vintage market people to do um a show in our town. And I remember them saying that would be just great and we had, you know, bands set up. We had the Taste of Trenton going at the same time. We had the vendors from them and it was gonna be a wonderful event, but we were not allowed to expel uh taxpayer dollars to have an event like that. So it kinda put a kibosh to things for a while. But in turn, I was so excited when they wanted to choose Trenton to come to Trenton to put their business here. Um, at the same token, we're closing down the roads. Some businesses don't like it down there. Some are mad that their businesses are and their roads are clo- closed down. And I can understand that too. So just all in all, I wanna make something fair and equitable for everybody to wear. Um, especially if they're not Trenton taxpayers and they don't own a business in Trenton. I think they should have to pay some type of fee to come to our town and do business. And so, like I said, at the same time, a lot of these are taking away from some of our businesses. Food trucks sometimes take away from our restaurants, cuz they eat at the food trucks, which is fine. I mean, it's good that everybody's down there and everybody's bustling and it's busy and I like it. But I just wanna make this type of affairs good for everybody. And there again, who i- is allowed to shut down the roads? Who who is allowed to do these? Is it private enterprise? Is it gonna be the city of Trenton? Are we gonna partner together? This is what I'm all concerned about. And I just need think we need to establish a criteria that's good for everybody. So I'm done rattling, but uh those are some of my concerns.
Mayor? So, yeah, I'll I'll have Dean get started here because we do right have our special events policy that I think answers some, certainly not all. Um, about, you know, processes for how we uh orchestrate this. Um, and so, yeah, I could have Dean answer the good portion of those that are ta- uh taken care of there. But I think just for for road closures, cuz I I went back through some things too, just to make sure of it. And I think and, correct me if I'm wrong, but we only had two road closures of Jefferson all last year and that is includes the street fair. Um, and so the other one outside of that, we were reimbursed for all the costs that go along with it um as per usual, but.
Right.
Um, Dean, yeah, if you wanna go through the rest of the application process, what that looks like.
Yeah, so just just to.
How we get approvals done there.
Yeah, so there is a special events ordinance. We updated this several years ago, as you probably remember. Um, kinda modeled the Plymouth ordinance, which was kinda seen as a as a benchmark. It's Article Five. Um, it's readily available uh online or if you wanna go into the ordinances, um, covers it. If you also check the City of Trenton's special events application, um, all the fees. Uh, there are fees outlined in there and this, when a person applies for a special event, if they want a road closure, they have to pay for the city incurred costs for the road closure. If that involves um extra trash pickup, if that involves um picking up and dropping off barriers, the overtime involved. If it crosses that threshold that the police chief wants extra police presence down there, um, they have to pay for uh the overtime. Uh, so there there's no uh the the, it's really outlined real well in the special events application. It's about a nineteen page uh um thing, document and everything. Um, but these are also the same special events applications that come before council for your review and approval. Um, I don't know specifically what else we we could add to it. Um, I remember the discussion years ago when we altered the ordinance to make it clear um that we, how we would charge. The direction from council was also that we didn't want to make it uh an untenable type of situation. We wanna alleviate the taxpayers of the costs that's involved. But we don't wanna make it so cost prohibitive uh that um a person can't host an event because everyone wants, uh, everyone says they want uh events and how much they love them and and everything else. So, I mean, the breakdown per hourly rate, everything else is all in there. Uh, the fire chief, police chief, D P W director and anybody else um reviews it, submits their costs. It's all part of uh the application. There's actually um an outline about uh the mobile food, um, how it's treated and the cooking and all these other safety things to make sure it's it's all done. And that's the, I personally think this policy has worked well for us. Um, unfortunately, we only have one other event other than we have uh, I know it's not, it's la- la- it's, I'm gonna call it Lobster Fest, but it's Lobster Oktoberfest or something, but.
Loxtober.
Loxtoberfest. Uh, and our regular city festival that closed roads. We don't have anything else that uh incurs a a cost or an issue or anything with the city. Yet all the events um that have a special event applied for um come before this body um for approval. As far as the way events been treated, um, the D D A uh made a decision within their purview to fund a part of the entertainment for uh Lobster Fest. Um, that was in their budget. It was part of their helping grow their their downtown area and that was a decision they made. Um, and and I I personally, I don't have any issue with it. Um, they also did fund the insurance for um the farmer's market. Uh, the farmer's market is something the residents and council have asked for, have wanted, thought it was important. Um, but we don't have the, currently, we don't have the ability to just set this up and run this our ourselves, honestly. Um, our department heads work very, very hard. Um, uh, Tim Beaker would probably land on his plate. I think he has a a full enough plate and everything and I I hope someday for us to be able to, I don't wanna say pawn it off, but pawn it off on maybe a D D A director or something like that. Um, but we're just, we just haven't gotten to that stage yet. Um, because as you know, the D D A until recently had no working capital. I mean, it was laden with debt and and that's been relieved over the last couple of years and and it's um it's gonna be in in better shape, so maybe it is something um we can go down the road. But we were fortunate enough um to have the vintage market people uh offered to step up and coordinate and host and put everything together for the farmer's market. And um, just to be clear as far as, uh, yes, the D D A made the choice um to make sure it was still viable and attendable function and everything to uh pay for the insurance. Um, if we decide to take that over and ha- uh take care of it and run it from the city standpoint, um, we will incur uh an additional uh cost. It's not a lot, but an additional cost to our insurance policy for hosting uh another event. Um, more than that though, I do have my concerns about the position we are we are in as far as we turn around and we do decide to host it and something happens and it's falls under our policy, which every council member sitting here is well aware that a year ago, we had our insurance policy canceled. And I spent the latter part of last year going through and acquiring a new insurance policy for us, which I think is working out real well and everything for us. But um, don't think that it's a a an easy flip of the switch that, oh, we're gonna run this and we're gonna make this all uh come to be and it's gonna save us all this money and everything. Um, my understanding from talking to Angie who runs the um farmer's market is they charge twenty bucks a booth. Uh, the couple of times I've been down there, um, they've had fourteen and sixteen uh booths going. Um, not not overwhelming, but a nice, nice little thing to do for all of the residents of Trenton. Make that all available to to everyone, which, you know, the D D A is an important part of it and it has to be within their district. But it's, they definitely aren't excluding anyone. Um, as far as complaints about uh food trucks and and everything, um, I I, my office has not received any complaints along those lines with uh food trucks. I welcome the idea of doing a food truck ordinance. Um, council would have to make uh some strategic decisions along those lines. My my first suggestion would be pick a certain amount of feet that they have to be away from any other licensed uh food establishment. Um, that's one way communities have been able to get around it. And the other thing is um the inspection fee. We currently have an inspection fee listed in the ordinances of a hundred dollars a quarter for a peddler's license. I don't think that's unreasonable to um put a more significant fee on there for food trucks if they're gonna um be within the city on a regular basis, at least to cover the inspection component. But once again, that's kind of a um separate but not really um directly tied um to what uh Timber wanted to, wanted to talk tonight. But it is something that is, it's it's been out there and it's a potential this. Um, and just so you know, two, this is one thing, concern I have from the administrative side. Council has given very clear direction, to me, to really work to grow the downtown. Um, and and I I think all s- all seven, uh, all six council members and the mayor made it very clear. And we've been fortunate enough, we've gotten a couple things to come through here, but, you know, Mr. McNally is not doing his winter fest because of the he- headaches and hassles to go with putting on an event. He it's, it wasn't, it wasn't that he didn't make some money off it to be able to donate and it went to charity. It just, it's a tremendous amount of effort. Um, Wyandotte uses, except for their street fair, they use a separate company that organizes and and runs everything and it's a private business. So um, you know, if we can get people to come and create programs and make them, make the downtown or keep the downtown a destination, I think it's critically important. Council should also remember that we're probably a year and a half or so, maybe less, away from the West Road Bridge coming down. It will be out for two years. County also is gonna be putting up to twenty million dollars into the Grozio Bridge. I'm sure it's gonna, we're gonna experience closures. The downtown is going to be under stress. It it is gonna, it pe- you have to understand that if people don't drive by Trago, if they don't drive by Roundhouse, if they don't drive by Elliot's Bakery on a regular basis and they have to detour around and they're not in our downtown area, if they don't come down here for activities or anything, it's not gonna be in the front of their mind. Um, and and our downtown area is gonna, is gonna experience uh it it's gonna be challenging for for our businesses that are not, you know, doctor's office and lawyer's office and whatever. Those people are gonna get there. They're by appointment. Um, so any decisions this body makes, I really want you to think hard about. We want it, we want all of it to be business friendly and doing what we can for all the downtown businesses um in the D D A and all the way up West Road. I don't really care where the business is. We wanna be cognizant of. But you do have a a clear and um upcoming threat that it is gonna potentially han- hinder uh, you know, growth and everything in our downtown area. So try to answer as many questions as I could, whatever. Um, but the, in the end, uh, the fees, everything are there. They're spelled out in the ordinance. Uh, I I just, I would need a lot clearer direction, which I I did ask for um uh at the end of the last meeting so that I would get an idea where where it wanted to go. But it, I I don't know specifically what y'all would want corrected, changed or the direction other than, you know, we have, we're down to one event that closes roads other than the street fair. And I I mean, if it's, if there's more we can do, that that's that's great. But um, that's it. About all I have to say on that.
Appreciate it, Dean. Thank you. So, oh, please, yeah, Councilwoman, I'll go to you and then I'll open up to the rest of the council.
Yeah, I, Dean, I agree with a lot of what you said. I mean, I one hundred percent wanna promote that downtown. Downtown's been a focus since I've been on the council. It's what can we do to promote downtown? What can we do to make it better? Takes money to make it better. The D D A funds in that, that D D A district is taxpayer dollars that are strictly. The DDA funds in that, that DDA district is taxpayer dollars that are strictly designated for stuff in that region. And so they do get a lot of attention down there and it is growing and it is getting better. We just approved $200,000 for murals and sculptures in our downtown, which is going to be great focal points for a lot of the businesses down there, which is great, I love it. We, that is taxpayer dollars that we're, we just approved, what, last couple of weeks ago or whatever, for the downtown. Anything created in the downtown and up West Road, if we extend the district, is going to go towards things for that. West Road, I think, is very neglected. I think we don't have anything on West Road. We need more flower pots, benches, this stuff costs money. And so I'm hoping to extend the DDA district so we can get more things that are designated for that area in the West Road corridor.
As far as extending it, Matt, just, just to be clear, I, I, I did tell you two weeks ago that I would have options to council in the near term. Cause there are three or four different scenarios which you can expand the DDA.
Right.
But, but it doesn't come without sacrifice. Council, and I'll go over this in more detail later on, but you have to understand, and I'm sure you do, but so anybody else who's bored enough to tune in to watch this. So basically what we get to do in, in a DDA area is we get to capture essentially the county's share of the growth in the, in the district, which wouldn't normally come back. However, now Wayne County doesn't do it like they did in 1997. Wayne County puts a stipulation in if you expand the, if you expand the district, they, they stipulate what you can spend the money on within the district. For instance, most DDAs will charge 2.5 DPW workers, 1.75 police officers, et cetera. You can't do that. So what happens is if you overextend your DDA commitment, you'll have a large pile of money in your DDA, but it's restricted funds because you would have gotten that growth, that growth is frozen when you extend that, alright? And that recapture, instead of being added to the general fund and being available to be able to pay our police officers, pay our firefighters, it's not available that way. And, and so the county has, I'm not saying they made it difficult because I don't, I don't want to bash them because they, they've shown a willingness to do it, but it's not as easy. Really, the opportunity to get this done was in 97 or 98 when they created the, the DDA. And you were part of council at the time and there was pushback because of an illusion or a thought, oh, it's going to increase the taxes. No, it was just, you know, but we can't undo it. But to go back and redo it, I am going to bring to this body at least four different, well, at least three or four different options of the direction you can go. But I want, I want it to be very clear what the long-term adjustment will have to make. Ramifications will be down the road. It can't be just a flip it, let's expand it.
No, I understand that.
Because in year one, two, and three, it's not going to matter. Year five, six, seven, it's going to, it's going to have an impact. So like whenever a council person used to say, eyes wide open, and that's all I want to do. Put it before you, eyes wide open and, and you'll be able to make an adjustment or maybe not make an adjustment.
Okay, and another thing you brought up kind of sparked something. That's why we're having this study session to discuss this stuff. No, there's no one perfect answer to any of this. But you brought up peddler's licenses.
Yes, it's in the ordinance.
Remember, yep, I remember years and years ago. And the thing about it is when these vendors come and they rent space in our town, they're peddlers. They're basically peddlers. Think about it. I mean, that's what they are. And you know, the vendors are transient merchants here, they come in, they come in here for a weekend or two, few days, whatever it is, they're, they're peddlers. And we charge the peddler's license a hundred dollar fee to be a peddler in this town. And what, what kind of peddlers do we have coming to Trenton that qualify under that license? I mean, what, what do you consider now a peddler?
Well, if you read the ordinance, it, it pretty much would narrow it down to like ice cream trucks and, and things that those.
Depends on what you're feeding, whether it be a barbecue sandwich or ice cream or a flower. I mean, and we established that peddler's license thing years and years ago because we had flower vendors coming on our street corners selling flowers on Mother's Day and Easter and holidays. And our, our flower shops were really upset because they said, wait a minute, they're not going to come into our shops when they can buy a $2.95 bouquet on the corner. So that's what, we brought in these peddlers so they couldn't come in, take away from our taxpayers and run out with all the money on a weekend.
Right.
And made tons of money.
Right, so, so there.
What's a peddler?
My recommendation would be to use, and what I was trying to explain is that's a good example. That's not, I think the person would have a fight or an argument that they're not a peddler, they're a food truck, or this or that or whatever. But there, I think there is, there is an opportunity there to address at least the food trucks with a proper licensing fee that is, because you think about whatever business you want to think about in town here that serves food, they have taxes, they have everything they're dealing with on a daily basis. And if you have a regular food truck that is sitting at the corner of whatever and whatever, they should at least pay a comparable.
I agree 100%.
Fee that, you know, but, but it has to be realistic. And the other thing I personally favor is having a distance where they have to be so far from another eating establishment. Because you can't stop them from operating on, on a public street unless you put something like that in place. I mean, the exceptions, you could do it where you have special event exemptions, you know, on a case by case type of thing or whatever.
That's what I'm saying. We just need, Dean, what I'm saying with this whole thing, and I don't want to belabor this forever, but what I'm saying is we have to have criteria, who's allowed to do these kind of fairs, who's allowed to do this stuff? And what, you know, what, the timeframe, how late can they go into the evening, how loud can the bands be?
Right, and, and what I'm saying, I'm trying to be nice though. You get the special events application.
I know, I've seen it.
And if you have a concern about the noise, if you have a concern about the time, the hours, just like when we accommodated the Halloween thing over on your street, wasn't it a Halloween thing?
No, the block party.
Block party, alright, I'm sorry. But, huh?
It was for Halloween.
Alright, so there were some accommodations made. That's, that's when, to, to bring it up, I will tell you that with Lobster Fest, Lob, Lobster Fest, I'm staying with that. I, I just can't stumble through it again. But I, I made changes after council approved that were more restrictive than what you approved, which Angie would attest to because we had some spirited discussions about it. Because I wanted to make sure that we, we limited the closure of the roads to, to the bare minimum. And it worked out, I think everyone overall was happy. I got a nice email back from Mia at Ramsey, she was.
It was a great event.
She, she was, she was very happy with it. But my suggestion would be really for council to make sure that it's vetted and it's scrutinized. Because anybody, Big Jim's special event group could come in here, have no association with the city of Trenton and they could say, we want to close off here to here, we're going to host a festival. And it may be a good thing, but if you want, you, you have to look at those hours. You have to look at those things because they're, that's your opportunity. I mean, it didn't get addressed early enough with Lobster Fest. It got done, everybody was happy, but.
That's what I'm saying.
Right, but you, you do get these and you approve them.
Oh, I, no, listen, I love these events.
I know it's 19 pages, but.
I love all these events, I think it's fabulous for Trenton. Everybody that knows, knows, and I patronize all these businesses all the time. So I want to make sure they're successful. I, I shop, eat, drink, and sleep in Trenton, live Trenton. I, I'm, I'm 100% for this stuff.
Sure.
I just want to make sure we have an established policy that we can all live with, that's all.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying, that's it. I don't know if anybody else has any ideas or questions or.
Well, so we'll open it up to the rest of council. We'll go Councilwoman Perez, then Councilwoman Payton.
Your Wendy, that's our?
No, go ahead.
I didn't know if you were first. This question's for Dean. Have you received any written or oral complaints about the road closures outside of the Midsummer Festival?
No, actually, I don't get any complaints about the Midsummer Festival. Two years, not this past Lobster Fest, last year's Lobster Fest, there was a complaint. It was actually brought to council, right? That was last year?
Yeah.
Yes.
Correct.
And that was addressed. We met with everybody and every side and, and whatever, and that those issues were addressed. But other than one business that was upset about it and how everything shook out, no. And I, I didn't get any, any negative feedback this year. And, and it was, I got one email that said, hey, you know, don't forget about us. And I had some conversations and whatever with Angie and the group and we worked it out. And I, nothing but positive stuff. So the system worked as far as I'm concerned. The only thing I really go back to is, you know, we have to vet and scrutinize to make sure those things are addressed in advance. I just did it myself.
And the flip side of that, have you received any communication saying that these ancillary businesses had increased business? So they say, geez, this worked out great for me?
Yes, so I, I have with Lobster, with Lobster Fest and with McNally's Winter Fest. I know a couple of the businesses reported at the DDA meeting a while back. Some of them had their biggest days of receipts and everything, very, very good, very positive. I was really disappointed, Mr. McNally didn't want to host again this year, but it is what it is. But yes, 100% good, positive feedback. I think probably the only, the only negative thing I can recall is I think Rivertown down at the far end would like to be more included or be able to be included in the stuff that's happening, you know, a block away. But it's, you know, it's a work in progress.
Okay, that's it, thank you Dean.
Thank you, sir.
Councilwoman Payton?
Yeah, thank you. So first of all, Dean, thank you for being the mediator of a lot of the things that I consider growing pains in our downtown. And I think that's a good thing to have, but I also think it's good to talk about it and make it fair for everybody so that everybody benefits. I, being the Trail Town Chair, I was told by the Destination Downriver folks that Tour de Tempe was coming to Trenton. And they wanted support and, you know, talked with you guys and yes, we're going to be behind you, do everything we can. I'm a retired person, so I tend to spend a little bit more time on things than I should and looking for something to do. But I just wanted to voice that that was the most eye-opening experience I've ever had. Now, I've, I go to businesses when they open, I frequent businesses, I stop in and say hello to whoever's there and working. I'll buy things here and there, I eat at your restaurants and even, you know, one of our doctors is downtown. So I do as much as I can downtown and I talk to all the people down there. But when I was going door to door, because I kind of had to, I was forced to, I sent out a council email to as many businesses that I could, also a Facebook Messenger, however I had been contacted and conversed with businesses in the past. And when you don't hear back, you know, then I put my shoes on and I go to door to door. And I try to capture them and try to find them and talk to them. And every time I went in to a place, I ended up spending an hour just talking about business in general and not Tour de Tempe, I was only there for Tour de Tempe. Now, that's not to say that businesses were talking, like nobody approached me personally on their own. It just happened because I was there, I was seeking help with Tour de Tempe and hoping to promote their businesses and then it turned into conversation. So these were all, you know, very kind of natural conversations and how they progressed. But I learned a lot and I think the number one thing, like nobody, you know, everybody has emotions and passions involved in making things work, I guess is a nice way to say it. And again, these growing pains that need to get worked out between the businesses and to know that they are there for each other and they should work together is so important. And so really, the number one issue I had was communication. There is no one form of communication that anyone responded to and I reached out to them. I considered, and I don't pull rank ever, but if you don't answer a council person's request for communication and I have to seek you out, that's, that's a bad thing in my opinion. It's not very respectful, not that I seek it or look for it or ask for it. But I appreciate the conversation for all the work I did have to do and it was a fabulous event and it was a lot of work, it is a lot of work putting on an event. I mean, I thought putting on a prom for 415, 16, 17-year-olds was a lot, but I mean, pulling off a, a 100-person bike ride was, was really, really difficult. And I think it was because of communication. And I think everybody, and nobody's innocent in this and everybody's passionate, but we have to find a way, and I really liked Dean's opinion that he presented to us a few weeks ago about a very similar thing, going for block parties. If we can have a similar form that if somebody wants to do a special event, they go to each of the businesses, they have the business fill out a form, do you support this? Why or why not? If we have it, what would we do to help your business? What are the impediments? What are the things that we're not thinking of that you need help with so that we can pull this off? You know, how, how can we be helpful? Some kind of form that everybody would then submit. Of course, you're going to have to plan things in advance now because you're going to need to get more information from these businesses, because I don't want Dean spending time having to call all these businesses like I did, to have to worry about the complaints and so forth and so on. Well, not me anymore either. But I just, you know, I, I, I think that would be a step forward in a sense that, you know, people would feel more included, people feel left out, people feel haggled, people say, you didn't think about this. And I think you can just say, you had, that way you have the opportunity. If you didn't respond, that's on you. If you, you were educated about how you were supposed to respond and you didn't respond, that's on that business or that person or that building owner. And you would have those documents that you could then put together, you could hand it off to the event organizers and say, make sure all this happens, attach it to the special events ordinance so that I know. Because the Lobstoberfest, look how well I said that, that just rolled right off, Dean. The Lobstoberfest, like it came to us and then it, it went off of our agenda because we had concerns and I thought they were all worked out. And then at the last minute, I heard about all these concerns again and it was, you know, tempers were flaring and everyone was in panic mode. So I just don't want that to have to continue to happen and we're learning. There's so much to learn and grow and to help each other. But that's one thing I would like to have is one sense of form of communication that everybody, it's standard. And you know what, if you're educated about it and then you don't participate in communication, then it's on you. The second thing I would like, and you know this, and Stephen, you know this and probably everybody else does, but I think we, it is time for us to have a DDA director. I think it's time for that person, they don't necessarily have to run events. I did give you guys a Google Doc of the research I did that Wyandotte does and some other cities and so forth do and the things that I investigated prior to this conversation. But you know, it's, it's again, it's a point person where it's taking this off of our city administrator's plate. But this person would also be a slash economic director, slash grant writer, whatever we roll into that role. we roll into that role. Um, they could write enough grants to keep their, their position even open if, if they're good enough at it. So, um, that would have to be the right person. Um, you know, Trail Town is looking for, you know, we were, we were supposed to be working on getting a store like a Patagonia or a, um, you know, lodging-type place. And there's lots of businesses that are needed downtown to support Trail Town, and I don't necessarily think that that, in the last four years, has been, you know, worked on. And that's not something I can do. Yet. I didn't get to it, I guess, in my list of things to do. So I think that would be an important person, that can be the lead communicator in. Um, I do have a concern about the DDA and the members, because if they voted to sponsor events, these are also business people who are not abstaining from the votes. And I don't know if they can abstain and then have enough to have a quorum, but, um, you know, I, I don't know, I'm a little conflicted with if we're, if they're, you know, taking all the profits from the farmer's market, and yet the DDA sponsored the insurance, like...
So just for clarification, I was here just because I know it was at that meeting, but anyone that would have had a direct financial interest did abstain?
Oh, good. Okay. So, yeah, that would be something that I would definitely want to make sure continues, you know, to occur.
Yeah, that's not a...
Yeah, okay, okay. That was one of the questions I had that I wasn't sure about.
Yep.
Um, Wyandotte's farmer's market is, um, all the money is captured and goes back into the DDA. So, um, that is part of the research that I, uh, found, that is.
But they have a DDA.
But they also have a DDA director, so, and all that sort of thing. So it's, it's, again, it's, you know, I'm just a little concerned about a, a few things, but mostly communication and mostly making it fair for everybody and to make sure that, you know, everybody's needs are taken care of and that we aren't, um, taking business away from somebody who is a brick-and-mortar in there every day, putting in the hard work to keep their business open. But at the same time, they benefit from the, from the events because they are getting more foot traffic. And I guess that's another thing that we want to think about, or I don't, it won't be me thinking about it, but, um, yeah, I will. Um, you know, the, the DDA thinks about it, the council thinks about it, the businesses think about it, but, um, now, see, I lost my train of thought. Oh, what is the purpose of the event? You know, that's what I continue to challenge. What is the purpose of a farmer's market? Is it to provide foot traffic for the rest of the businesses? In which case, maybe we should have no food trucks, because even a, a specialty donut food truck is gonna take business away from, um, a bakery, but maybe not. So, um, yeah, I like the fact that Nelson, you know, said, like, we don't necessarily have data that is confidential data that talks about how businesses are affected by vendors who are not, um, brick-and-mortar vendors. Uh, so those are my main concerns, and again, it will get worked out. And I think, um, there is also an ME-DC program, uh, the DCC group that I've been working with. We've, I've, I've approached, uh, a person, her name is Jasmine Dancy. She's, uh, kind of an economic development person, uh, for the DCC Coal Communities Group. She is working with some businesses, uh, and there was a grant offered to help businesses, um, with, you know, how they manage their business and how they can be more successful. And she did mention that the ME-DC has a program, it's called B-to-B. In other words, business to business. And I think it would be great if, um, the DDA would sponsor, um, at least a forum for businesses to come and, and be educated about how, uh, the ME-DC, which is the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, can work with these businesses to, um, create those links between the businesses and know that they're, um, they don't have to compete against each other, they compete with each other. And, you know, and they, they, you know, they help each other by having the foot traffic. And, and we do need more density and, and space downtown for shopping and retail and, and events. So, um, if anyone else has anything to add, those are my two cents. And I hope you read my document and gave you a little bit more information about what others are doing, but I think, what'd we say, about ninety-nine percent of what we're currently doing is, is what other cities are doing.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
So that made me feel better. I'm glad we studied it. I'm glad we were thinking about it, and it's, um, definitely something worth talking about because, you know, we want our businesses to be here and stay here and be successful.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else from council have any comment here? So, I guess just kinda tying things together here then, um, I mean, unless anyone has any objection, I think most of this can really just be resolved through diving in a little bit further on our special events applications, making sure that we're checking, uh, all the boxes that we need in terms of hours, closures, fees, things like that. I think, you know, we're doing a really good job of it. And I just want to say, in addition to what, you know, Dean said, to the compliment versus complaint ratio I get on all of these activities has been way off the charts, um, positively. Um, there's been hiccups, sure, um, but that comes with the territory. It's certainly, at this point, nothing insurmountable. Um, and it's gotten better with each time. So it's something that I feel like we've got the ability to, uh, resolve through this and through just, uh, making sure that we're dotting i's, crossing t's. Um, and to kinda piggyback, uh, off of the one thing that you said, Councilwoman Pay, too, about, uh, DDA director, that's something that, you know, not to tip too much of a hand, but is something that, over the next few months, I think we'll have, uh, some progress on, and I think we'll be able to further, uh, iron out some of these issues, so. If, uh, anyone else has anything, let's one more time. But, uh, oh, we'll go to public comment now. If there's anyone on the Zoom, I don't think so. Uh, but anyone in person wishing to speak, please begin with your name and address. Yes, all question, oh, you can go up to the podium for anyone that does. We'll go to anyone in person first, then those on the Zoom, and ask that anyone wishing to speak begins with their name and address. Directs all questions through me, and please limits their comments to five minutes, so. Yep.
Hello, uh, my name is Jeremy Soraki, one seven eight four five, Park Lane, Groseal. Um, first of all, I love the fact that we're talking about Lobstoberfest. Um, I did a Lobstoberfest fifteen years ago in a parking lot in Monroe. I lost a lot of money, and I committed to making it profitable one day. Um, and I love that Trenton, from when I first came to Trenton at Trago, because all I used to do was drive through Trenton to get somewhere else, I'll be honest with you. Every time I came through here, there was nothing going on. And I'm not trying to insult anybody, I'm not trying to say anything bad, but there was a restaurant on the corner called Roundhouse, um, most everything else, and I don't want to insult anybody, but, uh, there wasn't a lot going on. Eight o'clock at night, when I got done working, I had to turn the corner and go to Woodhaven or I had to go to Wyandotte. So that is, in my opinion, one of the most important things is that, uh, growing pains, yeah, sure, you're gonna have growing pains, but we, uh, have, I believe, turned a corner in Trenton, and I believe that if you look at the data of the homes, uh, the businesses that are available, the properties that are available, um, any kind of, uh, opportunities like that are, trust me, 'cause I look, are pretty well soaked up. And if you want to buy them, they're a lot more money than when I came here, 'cause I bought Trago for barely nothing. Um, so I don't want to get into a lot of details or bash anybody or say anything negative at all. Um, I actually really love Trenton. I've got three restaurants in Trenton. Um, and I think that we really should think about how we're gonna keep growing and keep supporting businesses like all of ours and everybody who has businesses down here, because Wyandotte does a really good job of supporting business. They have Third Fridays, they have New Year's events, they have all kinds of events, and they have downtown grants to improve your, your front of your businesses. They do a lot of stuff. So I think that they are a good model. Um, I know you went off of Plymouth or whatever you did, but Wyandotte's also a good example. When I went and built a restaurant in Wyandotte, I had a lot of support. They were really happy. Um, and I think that I, I, Trenton has also supported me. Every member here supports me. I see you guys all over, different restaurants, different bars, different places, and I, I know that that is happening. I just think that, you know, we, we've got a couple businesses that might not be happy about Lobstoberfest. Those might be the same businesses that are towing customers at parking their parking lots, and, and those are all of our customers. Those are the downtown customers. And they just do it every day, every day, every day. And you know what I do? I pay sometimes for the towing, okay? Because these are my customers, too. So I don't want to get into a lot of details of, I, I wrote a whole bunch of stuff down, um, but I think that Lobstoberfest is, uh, I heard specifically from, uh, Rivertown that their sales for beer and alcohol were equivalent to, uh, our summer festival. Um, so I know that this does help. If the other, uh, members of the community want to get involved, if Ramses would love to get involved and put a tent out front, they would increase their sales tremendously. But they choose not to. They choose to stand back and complain. They have their own parking lot in the back, and they want us to have our tent guy come at midnight to take down tents so that the streets can be, oh, we did it. We did whatever we had, we had people there till whatever time in the morning, making sure that happened. But they also have their own parking lot. Not many people have that. I don't have one. So when you guys do your summer festival, honesty, I don't make any money extra. Thursdays are dead, Sundays are dead, Friday and Saturday brings people that, uh, sometimes come in, sometimes don't. I probably break even. But it's great for Trenton. It's great for growth, and sometimes growth doesn't profit, okay? Growth profits in the long run with the values, with the tax increases, with home values increasing, with people wanting to live in Trenton, people wanting to visit in all our stores. So, uh, I'll tell you one statistic that I wanted to share. Um, I opened Trago in twenty seventeen. Um, I put four and a half million dollars worth of payroll through my staff in Trenton. These are people that live in Trenton, they shop in Trenton, they are part of Trenton, okay? So we, uh, uh, bring foot traffic, hundred thousand people a year plus at Trago. I don't know about the other restaurants, I just looked up Trago, but it's good for growth. And, you know, we all worked our butts off and sacrificed to make Lobstoberfest happen. It was our kids' homecomings, it was our kids' stuff, we missed it, my kids are seniors. I, I had to have my kid in front of the restaurant come take a picture with me. I chose to do that because I love what I do and I love the town that I'm in. So I know my time's up, but I appreciate, appreciate each and every one of you, and I'm just glad that I am part of this problem.
Thank you very much, Jeremy. Appreciate it. Anyone else for public comment? Angie here.
Hi there, my name's Angie Gazardo, and I'm one of the owners of the Vintage Market, also one of the, one of the ones that puts on Lobstoberfest. Um, I, like Jeremy, had a whole bunch of stuff I wrote down, but I think a lot of it was answered here, so just a couple things I wanted to clear up. I think there's a really large misconception that Lobstoberfest brings in money hand over foot, especially for the Vintage Market girls, is what I've heard. Um, I just want, I really want to make something clear. This year, when we put on Lobstoberfest, we put it on for the community and we put it on for the small businesses. We did not put it on for the Vintage Market, just like Jeremy didn't put it on for Trago, we put it on for everybody. We made zero money doing this event. Zero. We did not take home a paycheck, we did not take home money. The only money that came in with this event was the shoppers for our stores and for our restaurants. We put in countless hours of volunteer work to do this event, countless hours. We made sure everybody was involved. I'm getting emotional because it was very, it was very frustrating. I missed my son's homecoming to put on this event. I, I said to Rena before I even heard this meeting was happening that I don't think I want to do it next year. It wasn't worth it. It wasn't worth it for us financially, it wasn't worth it for us emotionally, it just wasn't worth it. And to have to come here and get questioned about it, it's, it's, it's highly disappointing. We got sponsors for this, and, and just to be transparent, the sponsors covered bands, stages, lights, sound systems, uh, road closures, multiple tents, tables, chairs, decorations, portageons. We had a beer tent, all the funds from the beer tent went to St. Joe's. St. Joe's offered to give half back to Jeremy because he helped pitch in for the tent. Jeremy refused and said all the money goes to charity. The mercantile did have vendors there, which I'm assuming is what's in question here. All the money from our vendors went to offset what didn't cover the sponsors, which included Jurassic Park for the kids, which was a huge hit, everybody loved it, a photo booth area, pumpkins, cornstalks, hay, which was almost seven hundred dollars in that alone, uh, the Dancing Witches, which was a huge hit for the community, um, and so on. Our six employer, employees, which they had to run all over because there wasn't enough of us. On top of that, at eleven o'clock at night, Rena, myself, Freckles and Grit, Christine and her mother picked up trash up and down West Road. These are the things nobody hears about. These are the things that, that you have to understand comes along with putting on a big event. And again, we do it for the community. We don't do it to put money in our pocket. There is no money for these events. That's just a very large misconception. And that goes without saying for the farmer's market as well. There's no money that comes in for the farmer's market. Any vendor for the farmer's market that grow, uh, farmers, for instance, they're free. We don't charge them. Farmers are free. It's twenty dollars if you're selling flowers, or I'm sorry, uh, cupcakes, clothing, something like that. All that money goes back into paying our manager who's there for ten hours a day, and if there's anything left over, it's lunch at Promenade. That's it. So that's where the farmer's market money goes. So I just needed to clear that up with everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Angie. Appreciate it. All right, any other public comment? Nope, one more.
My name is Christina McNally Stewart. I own Freckles and Grit in downtown Trenton. I, too, had a big, long list of stuff that, um, most has been answered, but as one of the newer businesses on the street, I just want to make sure that everyone understands how important these events are to downtown businesses. Um, I know it was mentioned that they thought, like, the vendors would ta, the vendors at these events would take away from the stores or other things being sold. Um, I don't think that's the case, 'cause a lot of the vendors that are at these events are vendors in the local stores, uh, first of all. Second of all, I've had the biggest sales days at my store in particular, um, the past two years of Lobstoberfest, my sales have been more than all three days of the Trenton Street Fair added together. Um, and I've had more people through my store on that one-day event than the three-day event of the Trenton Street Fair. I, I don't think Rena and Ange or, or Jeremy or any of us that help with any of these events downtown are in it to make a million dollars. We're really just doing it all for the greater good of downtown because we have businesses there and we want everyone to do well. Um, I also personally know that when an event is thrown, there is communication. Um, every business downtown is reached out to, hey, this is happening, do you want to participate? Hey, this is happening, do you want to do this? I think there is a means of communication. Some businesses choose not to participate and choose not to communicate, or have said they don't want to participate, which is fine. But I don't think anyone's being left out or not communicated with. As far as it was brought up about, um, I'm looking through my notes, like, DDA-funded events, there, there's, there's been multiple, they keep, we just keep mentioning Lobstoberfest, but Winter Fest was actually sponsored, um, by the DDA, which also had businesses present that conflicted with other businesses downtown, um, just to make sure, full disclosure. Um, I, I just, all of us businesses downtown, none of us are rich. Business is tough right now for all of us. And I think anything that can be done at this time to make it any more difficult for any of our businesses downtown are only gonna cause businesses to close and are only going to make it less appetizing for businesses to come to downtown. When I decided I wanted to open a shop, the only place that I wanted it was on West Jefferson in downtown Trenton. Um, my father's own businesses in this town, my grandfather's dental office was on West Jefferson in the fifties. This is home to me. There's a lot of cities around here that are a lot more appetizing and a lot better to their downtown businesses than Trenton, unfortunately. And we're all here to stick it out, we're all here to work together, um, we have a lot of downtown businesses that do work together. Um, one thing that Angie didn't mention, neither did Jeremy, but for Lobstoberfest, we had a whole committee, um, work together to put that event on, all of which were business owners in downtown Trenton. So it wasn't just Rena and Ange, it wasn't just Jeremy, it was Roundhouse, it was Trago, it was my, it was myself, it was Vintage Market, and we all worked our tails off to get sponsorships, to pick up trash at midnight on the street. And we all worked our tails off to get sponsorships, to pick up trash at midnight on the street and do what we had to do to make sure that that event happened for our community. So there is a lot of businesses that really are working together. One question that I do have specifically, just for some clarification, is what is a special event? Is a special event only an event that's held on city property? Or is it a special event, an event that's held on private property? Because there is many events that happen in downtown Trenton that are held on personal property that also have vendors and food trucks present. So I would just make sure if any changes are made, that those are all taken into consideration as well and not just specifically events that are affecting city properties or city roads. And that's, I just hope that you continue to help Trenton small businesses so that we can all stay open and thrive and have even bigger and better events going forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello. I'm Rena Bellinger, one of the owners of The Vintage Market and The Vintage Market Mercantile. I just wanted to let everybody know that when we do host a special event, we create a pamphlet. It goes out to every single business in downtown. We've also went up West Road, included several businesses that aren't downtown, slick disc, the menswear. We reach out to everybody. They all have the opportunity to come down. Local restaurants get a free booth in our Laps Over Fest. Maria's got to come for free and make money that day. Mr. Nix, they get to come for free and make money that day. So we make sure we include everybody in the downtown businesses. We work really hard to put that on and I just want to make sure that everybody is aware that we do communicate. Lots of people all come together, put the event on, and most people are very happy about it and we are very happy to do it. So I just wanted to clarify, we do communicate with all of the businesses. If they choose to throw away the paper, never read it, there's nothing we can do about that. But we do leave, even if we drop it in the mailbox, we've slid it under doors. We've called them. We do everything that we can do to make sure they're aware. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any last public comment? This one, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the study session. Moved and supported for adjournment of the study session. We'll go right into the regular meeting now. All right.
No, I don't, they may want to break.
I'll hold out. If I leave during the meeting, I leave during the meeting.
Okay, cool.
He's older than the rest of us.
All right.
Recording in progress.
She'll remember her last meeting.
That'll be very memorable.
There you go. That's all about you. All right. Nelson, if you want to run out now, we let everyone file in because it might take them a second. We've got the police department promotions. It's a good opportunity, yeah. Nelson, it'll just give them a second. Yeah.
How was the band thing? Is he still in band? Oh, good. Yeah, yeah. I got to see a bunch of posts about it, but I hadn't seen if Mason was in it. So I was like. Oh, okay.
All right. All right. If we could all please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Call this meeting to order at 7:08 PM. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Von Kerkhuis.
Here.
Fannadetti.
Here.
Kibwaden.
Present.
Pate.
Here.
Prujie.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rezepa.
Here.
Quorum present, Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item I have is the minute approval of the October 16th regular meeting.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Next, we have Police Department promotions. Chief Hawkins, if you'd like to come on down here. If we could get a motion to make this part of the regular meeting.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Chief Hawkins, take it away.
Thank you. Deputy Chief Neese, if you want to come down. I'm going to bring down Officer Garrett Hughes and Officer Seth Bond, if you'd like to come down. We've made this a little bit of a tradition now when we either hire a new employee or have a promotion in the police department. We like to bring them in, pin the badge on here. Both have already done their swearing-in prior to the meeting, so we don't have to do that. But first, I want to recognize Officer Seth Bond, who is being promoted to the rank of corporal on the road patrol. With the restructure of the police department, Officer Bond will be promoted to fill a vacancy there. Corporal Bond now has been a valuable member of the police department for over eight years and serves as a field training officer. His wife and kids are homesick today, so the badge will be handed to him. And I don't know if Deputy Chief wants to help pin it on or if we're good there. He'll pin it on for you. Yeah, it's a good photo out there, huh?
Oh, I'll do it.
Yeah. Get it fast.
Perfect. Congratulations, Corporal Bond. The second recognition here is for Patrolman Garrett Hughes, who just started his career here at the Trenton Police Department after working a couple of years in a neighboring department. Officer Hughes is a Trenton resident and a 2013 graduate of Trenton High School. It is also our administration's fir-, I heard the laugh on the 13 over there by somebody, yeah. It's our first hire as an administration. We're proud to have Officer Garrett Hughes here in the Trenton Police Department. His wife Nina is going to come down and pin this badge on and we'll get out of your way here. So thank you very much.
Counsel will want to shake all your hands too, guys. Stick around. Work down the line. Congratulations. Congratulations, Corporal. Congrats, Garrett.
Congratulations.
Yeah, good for you. Thanks.
All right. One more round of applause for Corporal Bond. It's nice to have you guys in those spots. Thank you guys for coming. All right. Next up here have a presentation if Senator Camilleri, Representative Churches, and Cal could come join me here. For that matter, if Councilwoman Pate could come out here too. So have some small, oh, no, this isn't fair. So you being the thoughtful one, had to get a little bit ahead of the curve and do some very, very small gestures of appreciation here. I know that, and I'm mostly pumped we kept it a surprise too. It's good. All right, cool.
I love to talk agenda, you know I do.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. That's why I left it vague enough. But you know, it's, four years has flown by, to put it lightly. In the same time, it goes by so quickly, but can feel like an eternity. But for what it's worth, I mean, you've accomplished more in four years than most people do in two or three times that amount. So I mean, your dedication, your integrity, your willingness to never take no for an answer will certainly never, never go unnoticed. And even though, you know, they couldn't put like question mark after retirement or quotations on anything because we know that you're not actually going to be done, but plenty of good hands going forward. And we know that the work you've done and the impact that you've made is going to last a lot, lot longer than even your time here too. So on behalf of all of us, we do have a small plaque here, Wendy, to say thank you and congratulations for everything you've done for Trenton and we know that you continue to do. And so brought some friends here too to join in on that. But do, on behalf of counsel and everyone here, want to give you at least this plaque first before you get the cooler ones from everyone else, so.
Great to see you, Councilwoman. I saw. It was a multiple paragraph-long email on your way out, which I appreciated. So I've had the pleasure of knowing you, Councilwoman Pate, for seven years now. What, prior to you being a member of this council. And I remember distinctly every conversation I had with you prior to you becoming on council was, when are you going to run for office? And I'm so glad that you relented and finally gave in because now that I am a resident here in the city, knowing that you are advocating for what's best for our city and our town and our community and thinking about things that no one else has been thinking about, and how do we improve the entire community from the murals to Trail Town to the rezoning of the waterfront, to all the work about how to redevelop a town that becomes a place that we all love? You have been leading that effort every single step of the way. The city is not anything that I think you even thought it could be within that four-year period, but you've already moved mountains in a four-year period, like Mayor Rezepa said. That is a huge accomplishment. This entire council has had your back in a lot of these projects. I know it takes a lot of effort and leadership to do that. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you for being a supporter of mine, for helping move the city forward, for being just a steadfast advocate for Trenton and for all that we can become. I am very grateful for your four years of service. I wish that you were not done, but I know that a lot of other priorities need to come first. So thank you from the bottom of my heart. I'm really going to miss you. And I'm here with Representative Churches, who's got our special plaque from the state of Michigan, as well as the governor, and I'll let her say a few words as well.
So, Councilwoman, I am so happy to be here tonight. Senator Camilleri said a lot of the things that I was planning on saying, but you make an immense impact on our community. And I just, I remember like one day I met you at Big B for coffee and you were just passionately talking about how to make people excited about recycling. And I was like, this woman is so passionate about things that make our world a better place. And you're a woman that I really look up to in this space. And some days are tough in Lansing, but it's because of people like you that we like to have that fight because we know people like you appreciate it and work really hard to make impacts in small ways. But those small things are what make the biggest difference in our everyday lives. And I couldn't do this job without people like you and without the kindness that you share of having those conversations. And every time I do have a conversation with you, I feel like you give me your full attention and you really, you have guided me in ways that I can't explain to other people. But you truly are someone who doesn't judge someone if there's a D or an R next to their name. You look at us as people who are community members, who care about people. And I am so honored to call you a friend and a mentor and you deserve this. You deserve all the recognition. And I am sending your family love and prayers and just a really peaceful couple of years, so. And I hope I get to see you here a lot too. And I'll be bothering you to come see me at Promenade for coffee when you're home, so. Okay, you ready?
I think so.
Yes, I'm Cal. I'm with Congresswoman Dingell's office. I'll keep it brief because I know we want to get back to our meeting. I know the citizens are so eager to hear what's on the agenda. Gotcha, gotcha. Wendy, I have had the pleasure of knowing you personally for a year and you've been really helpful on the CAG, sending photos and keeping us all abreast of what's happening on the ground is really a crucial part of being a citizen activist, which you take on in addition to your role on council. So we thank you for that. And I just really appreciate you being such a problem solver, particularly when it comes to redevelopment and rezoning of the riverfront properties. I think you've made a lasting legacy that we'll remember for decades to come, so. With that being said, whether you like it or not, you are now in the congressional record. Okay? So you are in the library of Congress, so you can keyword search yourself later on, but I'll leave this to you. And Congresswoman Dingell sends her love and regards.
Do you want to do a photo together? Does it?
Yes. Good thing we have a big house with new walls and.
Well, very quickly, I know that after today, I will have the five-minute timer. So today I prepared a seven-page, no kidding, comment that I was going to, I'm going to read during our council public comments. But just very quickly, you know, Senator Camilleri, where did he go? Just to extend thank you to you for all of your advocacy work that you do. And I'm glad I was in a position to be able to help you in many different forms. And you know, I do remember, you know, your first knock at my door. I said, come on in, get a cupcake. And you came in my house.
I just said, why not?
Sure. And then we got a chance to talk. And Jamie, you were out campaigning and doing doors. And I'm like, you know, use my house, just don't mind my dogs. Come in anytime you need to and take your respite care. And I'm so happy and thankful that you're also a teacher, fellow teacher, who is representing us and taking care of our kids in Lansing. And to Senator Ding, sorry. Representative Dingell and her office and Cal, it's been great working with you. And you know, she is next level and I can't, she is incomparable to, you know, the work that she does to what I think I do. I think I do a lot and she runs, you know, hurricanes around me. It's hard to explain how much she gives back. So a little extra time in her day to thank me is very precious and I will treasure this. And again, Mayor, I will thank all of you and have special words for all of you later in the meeting. I'm sure you all want to tune in, but thank you for the surprise. It's been a great honor of working with everybody, so.
Of course. Thank you, Wendy. Representative Churches and Cal for being here too. We really appreciate that, guys.
You're going to make them stay, right?
All right. Getting back to it. Next up, we have a proclamation for Native American Indian Heritage Month. We'll read that here. Whereas the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by American Indians and indigenous peoples. Whereas the contributions of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today. And whereas their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States. Whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976 and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President Bush in August 1990, designated the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month. And whereas in honor of National American Indian Heritage Month, community celebrations, as well as numerous cultural, artistic, educational, and historical activities have been planned. Now therefore, I, Stephen Rezepa, as Mayor of the City of Trenton, do proclaim the month of November. Now therefore, I, Stephen Rozepa, as Mayor of the City of Trenton, do proclaim the month of November as National American, American Indian Heritage Month in the City of Trenton and urge all citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies and activities. If I could get a motion to approve.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Next up, we'll go to public comment regarding items on today's agenda. This portion of public comment is reserved exclusively for items on today's agenda. There will be another opportunity for all other public comment at the close of the meeting. So anyone wishing to speak, we'll go to those in person first then on the Zoom. But let me your comment to five minutes, begin with your name and address and direct all questions through me. Seeing anyone here, we'll move right on along, all right? Appointments, I have a couple of appointments for this body's approval. I'm asking for your confirmation for my reappointment of Veronica Carrier to the Civic Commission, Brandon Torres to the Historical Commission, Chuck Earl to the Planning Commission and Mario Ferrante to the Planning Commission, all with terms expiring November 1st, 2026.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. We'll need a roll call, roll call. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Benedetti?
Yes.
Kiowaattan?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Prueji?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rozepa?
abstain.
Bonkriks?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor Rozepa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you all. Next up, authorities, commissions, boards and committees. We have a resignation letter from Jamie Mountain from the Cultural Commission. If I could get a motion to receive and place this on file and send her a letter of appreciation for services, moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Uh, next up here, DCC and DMA Downriver Community Conference and Downriver Mutual Aid Annual Membership Dues. Asking for this body's approval of a payment of $7,684.36 to the DCC and a payment of $19,523.51 to the Downriver Mutual Aid Group with funding from each of the accounts listed for annual membership dues.
So moved.
Uh, moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Two items under groups and organizations. Madam Clerk, if you don't mind taking this, the first we have is from the Trenton Lions Club, the annual candy cane fundraiser.
Thank you. The Trenton Lions Club is asking for permission to conduct their annual candy cane fundraiser from Thursday, November 16th through Wednesday, November 22nd. And this would be excluding Sunday in the City of Trenton. And this would be under the direction of the Police Department.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you. And then next up, we have the Trenton Hockey Blue Line Club Resolution for charitable gaming licenses.
Okay, the Trent, the Trenton Hockey Blue Line Club is a group of Trenton varsity parents for the Trenton varsity team. And they are looking for permission to be recognized as a nonprofit organization operating in the community. And this is for the purpose of obtaining a gaming license or registration. And they do that to raise funds for the team, so like to buy team gear and, and different things for the team.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
All right, two items now from the administrator. First up here, insurance renewal with the Michigan Municipal League.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you have the liability and property pool proposal from MML for our insurance, it's just done under a 3% increase over last year. So I'd ask that you move to approve the liability and property pool proposal from MML in the amount of $300,661 with immediate effect. And be it further resolved, the city administrator is authorized to execute the necessary documents after review by legal counsel.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. And next one for you, noise control petition.
Thank you, Mayor. Recently met with a resident and he supplied the attached petition regarding noise control. I would ask that you move and receive, move to receive and place on file attached petition and signatures and referring it the issue to administration for review and recommendation within 60 days.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Councilman Prueji.
Yes, besides going to administration, is there consideration it also goes to the Planning Commission?
Probably not. So, let me explain.
Okay.
So the issue that was raised relevant to this, I believe, has been corrected because the activity that was producing the noise should not have been permitted. And they've been given a violation notice and they will no longer be able to do this. So I believe that there should be, nothing needs to be done. Am I, am I spelling it out better for you?
It's clear.
Yeah. So in the end, the property that this is relevant to should not have erected a stage and should not have had, they should have had a special event request approved by council. At which time y'all can decide decibels and hours of operation and everything. So at first glance, once we get through the next week or two, it's going to be cured itself.
Okay.
That's it. So.
Cool. Any further discussion? Good, Councilman?
Good.
Okay. Anything else? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Uh, next up from our assessor, Ms. Barnett, Board of Review Changes.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. I have some board of review changes for you. Michelle Furnier was appointed as our regular board of review member back in November of last year. And she has taken a part-time position in the Clerk's office. So she has provided her letter of resignation. Also Stan Gristitis has been a board member since 2008. And he has been an alternate member for a few years, but he elected not to continue his term. So I would like to request official recognition, recognition for Stan and Michelle for their service. To replace Michelle, I've got a letter of interest from Peter Polis. He's a long-term resident on Boxford. And to replace Stan, Jim Anderson, he's a local realtor. He's a long-term Trenton resident and resides downtown here. And also Jeff Wager has been on the board since 2015. And he has spoken his interest to renew his term. So I would like the request, the board of review, request the council to make the changes for the board of review to appoint Peter as a regular member, Jim Anderson as our alternate member, and to reappoint Frederick Jeff Wager as our regular member with the term ending 12/31/2026.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Madam Assessor. All right, next up, we have two items from our controller, Ms. Cooper. First up here, the Pitney Bowes Senpro C Auto Mailing System lease.
Uh, yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. So our current postage machine is through Pitney Bowes and that lease is due to expire on December 29th of this year. We got quotes from Pitney Bowes and also from Quadiant for a new five-year lease. We had no issues with Pitney Bowes. They came, came in only what, two cents higher, I think, than our previous five-year contract. So it is my recommendation that we retain them as our vendor and sign the contract for the next five years.
Let's all move.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you. And then next up, we have budget amendments for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024.
Yes, so these are, yep, budget amendments through September 30th. Sorry for the little delay on them, but they're mostly just the approved wage, wage, wage changes.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Uh, next up, we have from our fire chief, Chief Anderson, request to replace the entry door at Fire Station 2.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you have a request for action, the original fire, the original entry door at Fire Station 2 is in need of replacement. Recently, last year, there were some repairs attempted and they were woefully unsuccessful at correcting the issue. Door does not close properly and it is drafty to the point you can see daylight through the outer edges and down the middle. We had obtained two quotes and they were within $70 of, of each other. The higher-priced quote included UV tinted glass, which is important to help protect our assets that are in, in that station from UV light. Therefore, seeking authorization to proceed with reliable door service to replace the entry door at Station Number 2 in the amount of $7,195, funds were budgeted in the facility's building maintenance account.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thanks, Chief. All right, next up, we have three items from our HR Director, Ms. Perry. First up, Administration Systems Research Corporation contract.
Thank you. So all three items are related to the city's health care with regards to medical and prescription drug. So the first is with ASR, which is our insurance provider. They provide, not only help us with our self-insured medical plan, but also our, is our co-administrator. Gallagher Benefits has been our consultant for the, since March. And they've done an analysis to make sure that we have competitive pricing and a good, and a good insurance company for our employees and retirees. And they have verified that that is the case. So I'm asking for a renewal of this contract with ASR.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Next up, we've got Ardellis Insurance LTD excess loss insurance contract.
Yeah, so this goes hand in hand with the self-insured program. So any, Ardellis is our current stop-loss insurer. So any claim that's over $100,000 would go to this insurance company. So I'm asking for a renewal. Again, Gallagher did a temperature check of the market. This is a good price and it's been a good product for the City of Trenton.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. And I apologize, I read that out of order too. So next up, we have the Magellan Prescription Management Sponsor Addendum.
It's okay, this works too. This is our pharmacy benefit manager. This would work with ASR, again, our medical insurer. And this would cover any, any of our active as well as our pre-65 retirees.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have from Parks and Rec, Mr. Beakers, unfortunately, under the weather and unable to be here. And it was on Zoom, but rather than have him talking about it, we've got a Marina contract extension here. Let me just get the popped up in the wrong window for me. Um, so looking for this body's approval for renewal or extension of the Elizabeth Park Marina Management Agreement with Wayne County, which is expired. The county has proposed to keep the agreement the same and continue for an additional two years with term beginning December 31st, 2023 and ending on December 31st, 2025. Parks and Recreation is requesting our approval of the agreement and any slight variations approved by the city attorney and authorize myself and the clerk to sign on our behalf.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you all. Uh, next up, Chief Hawkins, purchase of radar units.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The Trent Police Department applied for a traffic grant through the Office of Highway Safety Planning and is awarded $49,170.45 in reimbursable funds. Of that total, $6,991.60 was dedicated to new radar units. This purchase includes dual, dual stalker in-car radar units and one handheld LiDAR laser unit. This purchase was approved by the Office of Highway Safety Planning and will be completely reimbursed through the grant funds. Stalker radar applied concepts is preferred vendor and participates in the MyDeal program. I'm asking for approval of the three purchases radars for $6,991.60 to be reimbursed by the OHSP grant.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Councilman Prueji?
Yes, Chief. With these three units, how are you going to determine which vehicles are they going to go into?
Uh, we have two vehicles that are in need of dual stalker, which is a front and rear radar. We have two vehicles, new vehicles that are going to need those. And the one handheld can be checked out by any officer that's doing it and it can be used in any car.
Thank you for the explanation.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Chief. All right, next up, from our wastewater treatment plant consultant, Ms. Willison, an emergency repair on Duperron Fine Screen System.
Thank you. I'm asking council's approval for a payment on an emergency repair invoice. The, the gearbox in our fine screen, screen system went out and this system filters out any kind of large debris and everything before it gets into the plant. So it was imperative that we get this up and running as soon as possible. Unfortunately, DePere and the maker of the fine screen is kind of local. They were in Saginaw. So we were able to go up and pick up a new gearbox and get this replaced with minimal disruptions to the plant. So I'm asking your approval to pay the invoice to DePere for this gearbox at the cost of $8,455.61.
So moved.
Support. Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you. All right, next one I have here, an agenda item from myself. As a Madam Clerk, I know it put out some information here, but requesting this body's approval to reschedule the meeting of November 20th, 2023 to November 13th, 2023 at 8 o'clock PM with the inauguration ceremony at 7 o'clock PM to be in compliance with the city charter.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you very much. Um, lastly, it looks like we have one late item here. Councilwoman Bonkriks, I'll defer to you as our 33rd District Court Delegate for fines, costs and fees for October 2023.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the costs and fines for the 33rd District Court in the amount of $3,788.92 due from our city.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, and then I will defer now for our dispersments and statements and reports to Councilwoman Pate as our mayor pro tem.
Thank you. And for the last time, I'd like to move to approve the authorized dispersments of November 6, 2023 in the amount of $1,555,036.64.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered.
I'd also like to move to approve the City Beautiful Commission minutes of October 4th, 2023, the Cultural Commission minutes of August 26th, 2023, the Fire and Pension, sorry, Police Pension Board Draft Minutes, October 18th of 2023, the Library Governing Board Minutes of September 6th, 2023, the Recreation Commission Minutes of September 19th, 2023, and the Retiree Healthcare Benefit Plan Board Draft Minutes of October 18th, 2023.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none.
Other than I wish Councilperson Benedetti good luck in the next term as our next mayor pro tem.
Oh, it'll be fine.
Yes, it will.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Councilwoman. All right, we'll go to other council business now. And I'll just get started here by just once again, want to say congratulations and thank you, Wendy. I know I gave you the plaque and said all the good words too, but you've made an incredible impact and you're truly one of the best elected officials I've ever had the opportunity to work with, so.
Thank you so much.
I thank you for everything and plenty more to come. I can assure you of that and I'm sure you can do the same to us, so. Um, and then other than that, just want to, it's, I guess, kind of silly as it sounds to remind folks to go vote tomorrow, even though that there is nothing contested on the ballot, still an important habit to be in. And we're very much encourage you all to do so to make your voice heard. But other than that, don't have anything else. And we'll start with Councilwoman Rodriguez tonight.
Well, Wendy, I won't make you cry. We'll talk later.
I still have, wait, where to go?
I just want to tell you, I appreciate all your openness and your respect that you've given me. Your patience, because everyone knows I like to ask a million questions because I like to be thorough in regards to educating myself and making sure that I make the right decision. That's one thing that I really like about you, that you understood about me right away and that you respected it. I appreciate your welcomeness when I was first elected. And I appreciate the fact that you take the time to answer my call, even when I'm in the middle of lunchtime at work and trying to study stuff on the agenda. So, um, thank you. You will definitely be missed. I know I can still pick up the phone and call you.
Anytime.
Um, and that's all I have. I wish you the best.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Bonkriks.
Yeah, kind of the same thing. It's about Wendy. Tonight's the Wendy night. And, uh, yeah, I remember sitting here night after night and you'd come down to the podium as a resident and I think, oh, no. Really? Seriously? And then people really tried to talk you into running for office. I'm like, I'm like, you gotta be kidding. And then I thought, why, like, get to know her, like. Like, I really like her. I thought, you know, I just, I have loved every minute sitting here with you, to be honest with you. And you've been one of the best council people, and anybody who sits in that chair is going to have a hard, Emily, have a hard nut to crack. And I just, I just think that I wanted to see someone sit in that chair that loves Trenton like I do, and that was you and more. I mean, you've done so much to make Trenton a better place, and you had different passions than a lot of us did up here and made things come to light that we didn't even think about at times, because we're so focused on the budget and policy and different things that sometimes you forget about the fun stuff, like your trail town and different things. But you've been such a great, great friend and a great person on this council, and I know I'm going to miss you a lot, and heck, I still talk to Mary Ellen down in Tennessee, and, you know, get her input, because, you know, she was, she was a great gal, too, and I've always, I've always had a lot of respect for you, and I'm so glad you came up to that podium time after time and made a difference.
Thank you so much.
So, good luck, and I hope you enjoy Florida, enjoy your family, because that's really the most important thing at the end of the day, and you always made it about Trenton. So, thank you so much for being here, and I hope you don't stay away, though, and when you're home, come see us.
Well, thank you.
Thanks. That's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you. Councilman Benedetti.
Boy, before I get to you, though, first, first thing is, I think we need to acknowledge one of our chiefs here tonight, Keith Anderson. He finished the Staff and Command Class at Eastern Michigan University. I'm sure the police chief will get up and talk about something else. Keith is the second one ever in the fire department that I know that has done it. I also heard that you got some type of award, too, but I don't remember what it was. So why don't you walk over there and tell us what it was?
Holding back on us?
Yeah, I did receive honors for my work in my research capstone project, which I utilized that opportunity to do my topic on fire station location analysis for the city of Trenton.
Really?
Yes.
And we appreciate that.
What a coincidence.
But congratulations on that. I think that's a great honor for you to have. You know, I can remember back when you started as a fireman. Boy, and now here, look at you now. There you are.
Took a lot of schooling, didn't it?
It did. It did, but congratulations.
Thank you.
And one other thing, I know he's a resident of Trenton, he's been a resident his whole life, I think, or most of it. Why don't I wish him a happy birthday, Mr. Chato Banjanen. There's a name that not many of us had heard lately, but he's still around, doing well. I will not tell you how old he is, because he'd probably smack me, but we see him every day, walking and doing stuff, and he used to sit up here a long, long time ago, and he still loves the city, and he gets involved and asks questions, and I can guarantee you he's watching right now, because when we called him today, he's like, you have a meeting tonight, you should be going. So, he's still really involved, and I think that's a wonderful thing. Wendy, what to say about you? Timber did say it. I know there was an administrator that would cringe when you would get up there. When you ran for office, you were very inquisitive. You asked questions. When you became Mayor Pro Tem, you even asked more questions, and you were willing to sit and listen and talk, and you came in here like the rest of us. We don't know everything, we know nothing till we get here, but you did a great job. You did get involved, you have busted your butt around here. And like everybody said, you won't walk away from it, because you're a Trenton person, and you show that with everything you do. So I really appreciate it. We became friends, like, we talked about it was, really, is she really going to talk about Riverside again and again and again? And it will be gone, hopefully, before you are. So, it was a great effort on your part to get it moving and keep after administration here and Mr. Ackerman, and keep it going. We appreciate that, and good luck with everything you do from here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm going to make you go last.
I was just going to recommend that.
Councilman Peruzzi.
Yes. Well, we'll continue with the Wendy love fest. You were engaging and warm and wasn't, and weren't afraid to have conversation, engage different ideas. We not always saw eye to eye, but you respected me. That was top shelf. I appreciate that. I wish you the best, and I know for sure that you're not going to keep your nose out of it.
It's going to be hard.
That's what I'm saying. So, so again, I want to say many thanks for all the, all the hard things that you've done for the city. I mean, everybody's mentioned it, you know, I'd just be regurgitating, so I just want to say personally, thank you. The next one is that November is...
After October.
Huh? Yeah, and before December. Thank you. Is pancreatic cancer awareness month. I've had to deal with it in my family three times. Immediate family. So, I'm not trying to have people use that unfortunate ailment. Pick something that could help somebody, whether it's the heart association, breast cancer, I don't care what it is, just find something to help somebody less fortunate than yourself. And that's it.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Cabo Watten.
Thank you, Mayor. Wendy, I'll hold off for you for a second, but, but, yeah, tomorrow's election day, obviously. You know, if you haven't voted already, please don't forget to vote. You know, I, I want to thank this body for the last couple of different segments that I've been on this council, and I'm back on the ballot again this year, look forward to returning. And, you know, I just want to say thank you to all of you for, for having me here, so, and I look forward to working with, with, with everybody here on the council, all of our department heads, everybody here in the city, and it, it's, it's a lot of hard work. Wendy, we'll tell you, it's a lot of hard work, and it's not easy, but, but, you know, I look forward to that. I do want to thank our police department for the Halloween patrols that you guys put on. Those, you know, it's, it's nice to know that when we're out there with kids, that, you know, you're all out there with your lights on, just making sure, you know, folks are, you know, slowing down, there's a lot of kids, there's a lot of traffic, and everybody goes home safe. So thank you very much, and Chief, please relay that to the, to the team for us. I also want to thank Kevin Sergeant and the D P S team for going full tilt on leaf collection. It's like, one day they're, they're up in the trees and the next day they're down, and that's one of the things, quite honestly, that a lot of people take for granted here in Trenton, that we pick them up at the curb, and it's a, it's a big effort, and Kevin's team orchestrates it well and makes it just look easy. So Kevin, if you're listening out there, thank you very much for all your effort. Thank you all for the D P S team. So, I'm going to kind of go along with Nelson for a second. November 10th is neuroendocrine tumor day, Awareness Day. I didn't know that until recently, and, going to try not to use those, save them for you, Wendy, but, you know, Nelson, you said it the best. If, you know, there, there's folks out there that, that deal with some things that we don't all know about, and, you know, pick something, whether it's breast cancer, pancreatic cancer, whatever, support a cause. Go do, go out there and, you know, make a difference. You don't know who you're going to impact until it's your neighbor, it's your family Anyways, I'd also like to thank everybody recently for the well wishes to our family. We've been going through some things, and I want to thank, we've got a huge village of supporters. Thank you. Can't express enough. We'll get through this, we got it, but thank you very much. All right, you, Wendy. So, I, you know, words can't express the appreciation that you have for this, that I have for you, for your efforts, our conversations we've had, whether it's been about some personal stuff, whether it's been about council stuff. Sometimes we didn't always come on the, on the right track, but you know what? We worked through it, and we came up with some good ideas, whether it was planning commission, whether it was recycling, whether it was trail towns, murals, whatever. Thank you for bringing your pizzazz, your splash of color, murals, to, to the community. And I wish you and Carl and the family nothing but the best in the future, wherever your travels may take you. I'm sure they'll always bring you back here to Trenton in some form or fashion, and you've always got a spot here. So, thank you, Wendy. Mayor, I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Councilwoman Pate.
Well, that'll...
I should have given you a second.
That's okay.
There you go, Stephen.
Probably would have been a lot easier had I been voted out of office, but this is, this has been my choice and really thought hard about it. So much so that it keeps me up at night, and there's a lot of changes, and this poor side of the table is really, you know, facing our most strenuous times and nerves, so I wish you guys the best, and I'll see you on I-94 at the big house. Words are so important to me, and so, apologize about it. As you can tell, I'm very emotional, it's going to be hard to get everything out, but words are very important to me in how I craft them and what I say, and some people think I'm a good speaker, but I think three years ahead of what I want to say all the time, and so I always tend to criticize myself and forget things, and I wanted to make it right, so if you, if you don't start that timer, although, start that timer and see if I make it anyway.
I don't have enough timers.
So, four years, well, a little over four years ago, my campaign slogan was to connect, invest, and promote Trenton. That was my promise to this community, who I'm forever grateful for putting their trust in me to do this. It's the biggest honor anyone can have to be elected, to represent them. But when I tell people when I started, just even just recently, oh, when'd you start your term? They lift their eyebrows and let out a sigh. Oh. Because November of 2019 marked a tumultuous time for Trenton, a contentious election, then the loss of a mayor, relying on our charter to know what to do next, and then came Stephen via Mayor Pro Tem and an appointment in Scott, and retirements were beginning to happen even as early as December, when we lost our city attorney to retirement. Decisions about our future had to be resolved, huge decisions, and who would we return from, and, I'm sorry, who knew that when we would return from the new year, that we would return to a global pandemic? In spite of all the trial and learn by fire, these past four years would be the most or the biggest growth period I've, I feel that Trenton has seen in decades. This job is easy if you do it with one guiding principle, and for me, that was, quote, "Don't tell me what you assume we deserve and expect us to surrender to that. Tell me what is right and possible, because I know others are doing it, and we deserve it, too." I used the guiding document of our Trenton Coast Resiliency Master Plan, all the economic reports printed, all the community meetings I was part of prior to being on council to uphold the same conclusions that were found at every turn. They all said the same thing, that it is time to move on from our industrial past and embrace a resilient, sustainable use of our waterfront and downtown redevelopment, to move, and I will say, we do talk a lot about the downtown, but that's where it starts in all of our communities, but it will move our entire city forward as a unique destination location. I approached every decision with research, problem solving, collecting information from other communities, from experts and our own residents and employees' views, to find the best way forward for us. I am most proud. I am most proud, and this is, when I had the opportunity to run, this was probably the most important thing that I wanted to accomplish. But I am most proud of creating the zoning for our waterfront properties, which is called waterfront revitalization. Our planning commission finished a plan called Waterfront Industrial, and residents reacted with over three hours of testimony and public comment against that. I was coming to council, it was coming to council next. I took two months to research every municipal code of every waterfront city in the state of Michigan and the northeast quadrant of the United States, as well as Washington State, as well as my travels to waterfront towns, and compiled a document of uses. And I tried to look for similarities and contrasts and things that would fit. Nowhere did I find something called waterfront industrial, I knew it was a made-up name, and I could not give that albatross of a definition to our land. I continued to use what I learned about the Superfund cleanup and the CAG work, which I was also on the leadership board and represented my advocacy group, which was Trenton Visionaries and Stakeholders, to find that there were two levels of cleanup, one of which was non-residential, but that meant anything from a park to a factory, and I knew there was more that we could do with our waterfront. Remember, despite the McClough legal issues that we faced, we had to find something for all of our waterfront properties, not just McClough. Our internet was down, so I had to hand deliver to the home and print, print and hand deliver to every home of each councilperson, mayor, and city administrator at the time, a print out of my findings and a request to please consider something called waterfront revitalization as the name of our new zoning. If one name could be made up, why not a better one? Going into our meeting, I had no clue what to expect. When I opened the packet and saw the name, my heart raced, and that was all I could hear. The planners listened, they got it done, it was all there. They included requiring an environmental impact assessment, and they saved our city. It was lauded as a precedent for a unique local situation, which was, quote, "thoughtfully arranged in the regulatory environment to permit the best economic solutions which preserve the health, safety, safety, and welfare of Trenton." Fast forward to today, and our D C C Riverfront Coalition Communities has hired a company to provide a highest and best use analysis for our brownfields based on a new way of thinking, and we have property owners who will be able to envision the possibilities that we've allowed. Likewise, I've been able to be part of another dream of mine, which is connecting the Jefferson Corridor, which I just referred to as the D C C Riverfront Communities Coalition. I was able to mold a mission statement in areas of strategies and objectives. I submitted seven of the 23, which is about 30% of the task lists, provide projects that included a Jefferson Corridor streetscaping, Jefferson Corridor Workforce and Tourism Shuttle, a Foundation for the Arts Festivals and Culture, a Center for Eco-Tourism and Business, small business clusters, highest and best use waterfront property analysis, and our, of course, our trail town infrastructure needs, which actually align with several of the other 70% of the projects that were submitted by other cities on the waterfront. We had one week to submit those projects, by the way, during Christmas, so that was quite a bit of work and sacrifice to get those done, but everything is showing progress, so that's exciting. A connected example of advocating for the guiding principle of our waterfront is setting in motion the work to bring the Greenway Promise to, from D T E, to the redevelopment of the coal plant. Networking with environmental groups and university work, including M S U, who did a study for us, the U of M, who did a couple studies for us, and then being able to help the Michigan Toddman College of Design Corp graduate students work, sponsored by the Great Lakes Way Project. We gave our partners a vision of what is possible, much like the work the D C C Group Studies will bring, and from what I just found out last night, that we'll be working with the D T E Greenway Project. My first motion, my first meeting, was to allow for public comment regarding agenda items at the beginning of the meeting. It's a lot to say, Stephen, sorry, at the beginning of a meeting. Granted, it's only been used a few times, but it's been to good effect, and when it was used, and that is an important precedent of the way I think we've been working ever since, as I wanted Trenton to begin to modernize the way it did business, based on my several attempts to try to talk to council at the podium, but to change the way and modernize the way we do business, and also to press for timelines to get things done. I was told we would always let people talk if they came, but there was no real way for people to understand that or know that, and no guarantee that we would allow them to speak, so I wanted to make sure we codified that. Mayor Rezep... Mayor Rozepa and City Administrator Dean Creach would continue to tighten up the ship. Myself and others would be trained in MEDC's redevelopment-ready communities, designed exactly to do that. Our departments were reorganized, the right people are in the right jobs and were appointed, and our budget was streamlined, all to maximize efficient use of our stressed resources. Supporting our local small business came along with Trail Town Economic Planning, revitalizing our downtown and the pandemic. I created shopping and restaurant guides with times and ways that people could act with our businesses, when, you know, of course, it was difficult to do so, to get out and to shop and dine. I updated our entry in the Southern Wayne Chamber, let's just say SWCRC, sorry, booklet to be more relevant and attractive to investors. I was a panelist on Destination Downriver Vodcasts. As SEMCOG delegate, I brought the SEMCOG Postcard Program to Trenton and was the first town that they showcased on their Shop Local series that eventually became a model for other cities that I could speak to and help educate others how to do it, as well as, they've turned this into an extended program that they offer, and this was for being, just for being a member of SEMCOG for free, well, kind of for free for the city, just with our dues. I advocated for lighting up the downtown, and if you notice, the colors are still fun and inviting. Being visible in the community is important, but strategically choosing your location is also important. I attended an SWCRC event where Dave Lorenz of Pure Michigan would be speaking. Ron Heinrichs will never, ever let me forget that when no one had questions for Dave, that I would raise my hand and ask him, put him on the spot, I suppose, what was needed to do to be recognized as a Trail Town, considering we were denied in our first application and hadn't gotten any feedback yet. He replied and smiled and nodded and said for me to have Joanne Gagne give him a call. In the next cycle, we worked hard to meet the gaps, and we would meet those gaps and be named the seventh Pure Michigan Trail Town in Michigan at the time. Trail Town would see continued growth. It was important for me to take on chairperson duties after Joanne Gagne retired to keep her vision going, one that I invested in because I knew that would move the city forward. I hosted Slow Rolls, including Tour de Tom, hosted by Under the Radars Tom Dalton with over 100 participants, and our own local Slow Rolls, some sponsored by the Rotary, which is supporting their mission for cycling-to-serv program. I hosted Chalk the Walk, collaborating with nine community groups, police, and the Civic Commission to highlight the trail on the Frankenpoet Drain and Uptown Trenton, which doesn't always get the attention that downtown gets. This developed into the Story Walk concept, which is going to connect the trail from Headkey Elementary to the library in a sense of providing literacy and wellness. I connected with the DDA Master Plan goal and the Trail Town Master Plan goal to install the Gateway mural at the train bridge. I was awarded an America Walks grant for signage for our location on the Ironbell Trail and Downriver Link Greenway, and worked with DPS to install the directional signage. I was a liaison for the Downriver Link Greenway Partnership Gap Analysis that will finish gaps and provide more signage for the trails. I secured Action Bound Tours, which are free tours that you can still take of the city of Trenton on your bike or by walking with the Trenton Business Association, so that people had an opportunity to get out during the pandemic in a safe way. This also helped me continue to connect with businesses and present them with signage recently as partners in support of economic development. So anybody that you see with a certificate or a sticker in their window, please make sure that you shop local again this season, and they support us, as you saw in our study session, and we support them. I worked with the TBA to redesign their downtown banners, which promoted businesses and the trail economy. I was a stakeholder in the Six Points Here on Metro Parks project, bringing sustainability to tribal lands along the Ironbell Trail, and I was also a stakeholder on the Healthy Trenton Turned Healthy Downriver Team, helping them to reorganize and reconnect with the community. SEMCOG would host quarterly meetings where you visit other towns and listen to people doing fascinating things. It's great to learn from other people. One of them was Claude Malinari. He is the CEO of Detroit Metro Visitor and Convention Bureau. So, of course, I would hang around after to introduce myself and tell him about Trenton. Come to find out, he's a hockey referee and was just at the Kennedy Rec Center. He spoke about tours in his speech to SEMCOG that he had to arrange for groups visiting the Detroit area. So I invited him to create a bike tour of our waterfront and an excursion to the International Wildlife Refuge. Fast forward, and I believe I recently heard that there is a group that will be doing some kind of tour at the refuge, bringing people from outside of the area into Trenton. We have our, we have to tell our story, and we have to tell it to the right people. Apparently, I had heard that I was also only, the only one to reply to a particular SEMCOG request to review our master plan. I had replied that we had already just adopted one, and it was award-winning by the Michigan Planners Association, but hey, go right ahead. That reply would lead to outreach for others to join, and then becoming part of a pilot program to train local leaders in the Coastal Leadership Academy. Connecting with the Great Lakes St. Lawrence Seaways Initiative brought advocacy and access to resources to apply for grants. We showed off our waterfront to engineers. We were finally awarded a grant to support a very small part, but still a significant part of our Rotary Park redevelopment. We were also presented with a document called the Coastal Sustainability Assessment, which is a guiding document that reviewed our current plans, working with Paul Haley, our emergency manager, and Dean Creach also on those calls, as well as it's a blueprint or a tool for how we shore up our vulnerabilities and how we do that, where to shore them up and how to do it. A visit to All About Grace at their grand opening, this was in Uptown Trenton at the time, and an introduction and conversation would lead to a leap of faith for her to move her shop downtown, which would be a catalyst for her vendors to open up all their other shops that you see in the downtown area, and for businesses to want to come here, other businesses that would want to come here and collaborate on festivals. Taking a leap of faith to support the Bird Scooters, hashtag Scooter Gate, and all the popular social districts would challenge the way we do things. Many people pushed against it, but at least it allowed us to do something different and move forward, and I saved, I took a screenshot of this because I thought it was just amazing. A resident said, "OMG, Trenton is actually cool," end quote. Opening minds and leading to growth is, was what was important to me. Just as things were being built out, built up, other things came down. McClough, down, check. Riverside Hospital, checking. DTE, getting ready to check. Finally, enough said. See above, follow the plan, expect better in its place. Also, check, curbside recycling. Again, not a lot of work for me, just that it's a standard that you set as the right thing to do, and let's figure out how to do it. Our city administrator found a way to get it done with minimal cost to residents, securing a huge grant to offset startup costs, and it created a huge impact on our environment by reducing waste heading to the landfill neighbor that we steadfastly opposed. But we have to put our money where our mouth is, and we have to, you know, keep that from growing ourselves as well. So thank you, everybody, for getting on board and recycling so well. I'm also proud of being able to connect with residents who felt that they could call me and get answers. Outreach from one would help me to help resurrect the Cultural Commission, which was the start of making an impact on the arts and cultural programming in Trenton. When we could, we hosted a pride flag raising ceremony where over 100 people attended, and do each year. I received communication and outreach from former Trenton residents all over the country, so proud of what we did. I had neighbors tell me how proud they were of their LGBTQ kids that I never knew, nor needed to know, I suppose, that lived there for over 20 years, but they opened up to me and invited me into their families to understand what they had been going through and how people viewed them. A business moved here hoping that we would be a welcoming community. The way we did it was proper, protocol, and honorable, but ultimately and sadly, we had to protect our underserved from threats from other groups that exist here, and following a Supreme Court decision chose to no longer fly other flags than municipal flags. So yes, we do have a long way to go, and one of the Cultural Commission's goals is hopes for humanity, which included residents reading MLK and councilpeople, and mayor reading MLK's speech, parts of it, putting it together, mashing it, and they have even more plans for an exhibit next year, which will help break down the walls that us humans tend to put up between each other. The Cultural Commission would also go on to create Social Wellness Month during the pandemic and activities that would help us reconnect our neighbors once it was safe again. At the Cultural Center, they decorated Christmas trees with good deed cards for us to take and pay forward. They have met with community groups to assess the needs of the community. They are supporting the school bands and our local theaters. They are bringing awareness to Mungwaggon Park, timely that it is Native American History Month. Many people don't know that this park is located near Anderson Elementary, which is now on our Parks and Recs webpage. Thank you to Parks and Rec for doing that and also getting signage for the park. It will also have a special blessing by a Native American Potawatomi tribal group, and will continue to educate residents about Chief Mungwaggon and the impact of Native American culture in Trenton. We would also see the beginning of art being added downtown. Starting small, I won an MML Bridge Builders Grant to introduce an art installation that would connect about 50 residents, who helped install our butterfly tree sculptures downtown. After much legwork, I also would introduce a larger footprint of a community mural to the train bridge. The mural depicts the evolution of transportation's effect on the development of our waterfront in West Jefferson. Roughly 30 residents participated in actually painting the foundation of the mural, and hundreds drove by, offering their support, honking horns, raising thumbs up, and joining us to the ribbon-cutting ceremonies and other events that use the mural as a stop along their visit, as well as a backdrop for senior pictures. The ultimate leap of faith in how transformative art can be to businesses and culture is securing the approval of the DDA for an art festival next summer. That would be a game changer. Again, we mentioned property values and so forth, but it only became about because I happened to find myself in the right place at the right time again, seeking shelter in a rainstorm at a coffee shop where I was a peddler, by the way, being a peddler, where artists gathered and struck up a conversation. Another result of resident outreach found our way to modernizing the animal ordinance. A couple of residents were finding themselves in terrible situations while walking their dogs, and once it was brought out to awareness, we found that it was a wider problem than expected. But our ordinance officers can only do what our ordinance asks them to, so I took a deep dive in, noticed several irregularities, such as we were even still considered a kill shelter. Our police department created a new ordinance to modernize definitions and better help residents who face precarious situations with their animals. Our residents are also our commissioners, and I was able to network with them as well, helping the Historical Commission clear the way for reorganizing and reopening, encouraging the City Beautiful Commission to expand their outreach to Uptown, and work with the DDA and the TBA, solving water issues, helping educate people about recycling and spread their service to other parts of town. I forwarded the Mimi's Mission Sensory Kit autistic response support to the police department. I'm proud we've purchased our first EV vehicle for the fire department, and again, I'm thankful for the Civic Commission and Parks and Rec help with Chalk the Walk, for the Library Commission for Story Walk collaboration, and for the DPS for supporting Trail Town upkeep. There are many things I would still like to see finished that I helped set in motion, and I feel a few of them that I hope can, that be completed are the gathering space at City Hall, the West Road Corridor Concrete Jungle Breakup, we do have bucket and raider plans for to help our Uptown businesses, more green policies and projects, more EV hybrid vehicles, rain gardens, Nomo areas, complete streets ordinance, building review, the RRC process finalized, including department streamlining and finishing the branding and actually using it, improving our webpage, updating our master plans, Trail Town, DDA, Parks and Rec Cities, a DDA Director, Grant Writer, Festival Coordinator, expanding recycling to parks and facilities, as well as adding curbside recycling to non-homeowner residences, and expanding artwork into our actual neighborhoods and waterfront to increase property values. I never got the chance to upgrade the look of our garbage cans at our parks after four years, and also the barricades at Third Street. And just when you think you're making progress, guess what, and I have to forward this to you, there goes Northville, for example, who just installed fancy collapsible bollards that can be raised or lowered to block traffic or not as needed, built right into the ground. Very extra, but that's what keeps me motivated, and knowing how they do it better, and how I can get things like that done here. And to my thank yous, so I would like to thank Mayor Rozepa and City Administrator Scott Church and Dean Creach for allowing me the space to dream, the autonomy to do so, for listening to my ideas, for giving me feedback, which sometimes would crush my dreams, but that's okay, I would keep going, for printing on both sides of the paper, and mostly trusting me to figure it out and present you with the details. I thank our attorneys for responding to my questioning. It didn't mean to be disrespectful, I just want to make sure that we cover all of our bases and check all the nuances to get the most out of something without getting in trouble. I also thank every single department head and staff person. I waved to my DPW person this morning, probably has no idea who I am, but I've probably asked you to help me to complete a project or two along the way. They are also creative, smart, resourceful people in their roles and in life. I thank this council for their votes of support for all these crazy ideas and programs. Everybody has a special gift to share on this council. Timber, and when Bill was here, are our historians with deep perspective and deep roots with the stories of our residents and their countless contributions. Rick has the perspective of our city services and an extensive base of residential experiences that provide direction to do things that are right for people. Nelson, you are my council seat neighbor, my buddy, my next-door buddy. You're my computer glitch helper, my timekeeper. How am I doing?
Yeah, I heard so far.
Okay. And is always sure to ask for financial, systems, and legal perspectives, as he did tonight, but also open to trying new things, and he works to see projects through. And something I didn't write but remembered while you were speaking is that, you know, you actually called me and tried and lifted me up, and I didn't expect those calls, and I appreciate them more than you know, and that's between us.
Not anymore.
Well, it's all what you said. To Scott, who found his way here unconventionally, but is always prepared with questions and background understanding of our building and infrastructure issues, as well as complimenting our departments that don't always get the recognition that they deserve. And yes, thank you for all of our backyard conversations and time spent dreaming, and can we do this, can we do that, and what do you think, and trying to get you on board because, you know, you're one of my specimens that I can craft, and hmm, let's see, will he be able to, you know, understand me and all my craziness and come on board, and so I thank you all for that. And then to Dora, our newest council member, for so quickly being ready to learn how to advocate for what is dear to you and helping the community, for all the outreach calls and conversations, and thankfully, I'm retired, and she knows to call me after 9:00 AM, and always asks if I'm out of the shower and so forth, and we talk for a long time. But what I appreciate most is the attempt and/or actually attending every single event that I've ever hosted or that the city has hosted. You're present, and you're passionate. And to our new council member, most likely tomorrow will be elected, Emily.
Most likely.
Who will, there could be a big write-in campaign. No, please don't. No, I cannot. Who will finally get her chance to serve you. Thank you for sticking with it. You will find that she is smart, witty, driven, and ready to see Trenton grow because she has her young family to make sure Trenton continues to thrive for. It is a myth that it can't happen in Trenton, that Trenton will never be that. We don't have to be big. We treasure our small community feel, full of great friendships, great schools, local businesses. Nevertheless, we can have a better quality of life and embrace the gifts that we were given in our location and our national, natural resources. I'm about being in the right place at the right time with the right people, working together, sticking your neck out, grabbing opportunity where you can find it. Always keep your mind and eyes open for the opportunities and create your own future. A psychic recently told me that I would publish a book soon. I am now thinking that she didn't mean actual words, although I just wrote and spoke too Rather, it's the story of my life, and she meant that I'm ready for the next chapter. These were decisions that allowed me to have the time to serve in the first place that were made. I'm like, well, I'm gonna be here another five years, I might as well give it a shot. Much to your surprise. well give it a shot. Much to your surprise, I hope I prove myself. And now the decisions that we're facing are taking me to new places and to support my husband's recovery. So this chapter was titled, Trenton, Where the River's Edge Is Just Our Beginning, but I have more to write about, and I thank you for your support from the bottom of my heart. Thank you. This is still on my clock? I'm gonna turn this off now.
I don't think anyone could have ever thought you wouldn't have been thoughtful on the way out to Wendy, so thank you for that. That was, you did incredible. Tied it all together very nicely. So if anyone wants to follow that up, Madam Clerk, do you have anything for us?
Gosh. I, I too just want to say, echo everybody else's comments. We're truly going to miss you. I'm so sad your name's not on the ballot tomorrow, and best of luck to you, Wendy.
Thank you so much.
And just a reminder, everybody said election day is tomorrow. Polls are, polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and City Hall will be closed and this Friday, November 10th, for Veterans Day. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Assessor, do you have anything tonight?
Yes, lending, we want to see, and teleporting your book.
Thank you. You got one chapter already.
Thank you, Madam Assessor. Mr. Treasurer?
Oh, me? Thank you. I appreciate it. Never saw a microphone I didn't like. A couple of things. I got nothing for the treasury side of things, but I do have a couple of reminders or notices, and one was Eric Ho Shaw posted this blood drive notification for a week from today, as a matter of fact, from 1:00, 1:00 PM to 7:00 PM, for a blood drive at Westwood Center, sponsored by the Trenton Rotary Club, but it's open to everybody, you know, and you can come on in, and, and as a matter of fact, they have the blood races. Now, you may not know what the blood races are, I'll talk to you later about it, but it's very interesting. And there's ways to win it, and we have prizes for the, the fastest draw or the slowest draw. Anyways, I, that got a, it got a lot of good reaction. Also want to thank my wife for coming down tonight to wish Garrett Hughes good luck in his tenure with, as a Trenton cop. Garrett was with the Riverview Police Department, he's my neighbor, and we got a few of the neighbors to come down to wish him well, and very proud of him, and, and then seeing all the, all the guys on that shift, I tell you, that was pretty special. Reminds me of how many officers I don't know, but, but they, they all look great, and, and I'm so proud of them. And Wendy, man, you know, I, I can't believe it's only been, is it really four years? I can't believe what you've done in the four years. Of course, you started before that, really. And, and I appreciate the time we had working on a few projects, few things that were of common interest, but you've got a, a pure heart with the focus, and there's, there's like eight words, things that you added to this council, and I'll go through them really quick, won't be nearly as, never mind.
Short.
Yeah, somebody said short, that's the word. But you add, to this council, you added diversity, you added value, you added passion, you added focus, you added pizzazz. Who said pizzazz? Pizzazz, okay, gotcha, I was listening. Vision, and then most of all, you added love for the community. So we're gonna miss you, but we can't wait till you come back, because it, it'll happen, it'll happen. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Treasurer. Any of our department heads have anything for us tonight? Very wise, cool. Lastly, we'll go to public comment, any, comment in person first, and those on Zoom. Anyone wishing to speak, please begin with your name and address, direct all questions through me, and limit your comments to five minutes. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion adjourn, moved and supported for adjournment at 8:29 PM.